Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Dolgren?
Here.
Commissioner Alves?
Here.
Commissioner Dematte?
Here.
Commissioner Beckler?
Here.
Commissioner Rantine?
Here.
Commissioner Watts?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to today's Planning Commission hearing. The meeting is open to virtual and in-person participation and may be observed online through the Placer County website. If anyone would like to make public comment on any item today, the Planning Commission clerk will announce when you are to line up to provide testimony. If you are calling in at the appropriate time, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment on this specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not on the public agenda or hearing items. Each commenter will be entitled to three minutes of comment. Thank you for your consideration as we work to ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. Please also be advised that today's hearing is being recorded and will be available on the Planning Commission website following the hearing. I will now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a report from the county's planning director. Thank you, Chris.
Hey, good morning. Chair Dematte, Planning Commissioners, Chris Bohulie, Planning Director. Wanted to start with a couple of updates from the Board of Supervisors. At their November 5th hearing, they heard an item on the general plan update, including the community engagement program for the general plan update and a consideration of formation of a general plan advisory committee. Wanted to report back that the item was very well received. There was a lot of discussion about all of the outreach that is going to occur during the general plan update and a lot of excitement about the different methods of doing that outreach, whether they be workshops, pop-up events, virtual events and the like. However, there was quite a bit of discussion as well about the potential formation of a general plan advisory committee. And the board directed staff that at this time, they preferred not to form an advisory committee. They did leave the door open that should there be a need in the future, as there may be individual topics that might be of interest to form a committee or an advisory group, that there might be that possibility. So for now, staff is going to begin the community engagement component of this update without an advisory committee. But you're going to start to see a lot of engagement occur at the beginning of the year. We have a number of workshops that are being set up that are going to occur at the beginning of the year. I did also want to note that you are going to begin seeing or that we are going to begin having workshops here at the Planning Commission. We're tentatively looking at a January Planning Commission date for the first workshop with you, followed by a number of additional workshops that we intend to have at the Planning Commission in 2025. So 2025 will be a busy year at the Planning Commission with general plan workshops. And wanted to note that for you. I did also just want to use this time as an opportunity to call attention to the general plan update's webpage, plaster2050.com. We're starting to include a lot of good information there about the update. There's a real nice video that speaks to the update. So would like to encourage you and others that might be listening in to spend some time on our website. In terms of upcoming items that are headed to the Board of Supervisors next week, we have the Palisades item that will be at the North Tahoe Event Center. That meeting will start at 9:00 a.m. I should also note that the WellQuest Senior cottages project is on that agenda as well. We will be requesting a continuance that is listed on that agenda, a continuance to December 17th. December 3rd at the Board, we tentatively have a couple of items that I wanted to note. Those are items that were previously considered by the Planning Commission. That's the Loomis Basin Equine Project in Penrin, as well as the Colson Variance Appeal that was heard by the Planning Commission a couple of months ago. That item has been appealed to the Board of Supervisors and is, again, tentatively scheduled for December 3rd. And lastly, wanted to mention on that December 3rd date, staff is intending to request authorization to submit the Housing Element Amendment to State HCD. I know that there was interest from the Planning Commission in getting a copy of that. Once it is available, I will ensure that Planning Commissioners get a copy once that is made available. And then lastly, we are intending or we are tentatively looking at the December 17th meeting at the Board to have the ranch project be heard, as well as the WellQuest item that I mentioned is being requested for a continuance. The last item that I wanted to note for the Planning Commission is just upcoming Planning Commission meetings. We do have a December 12th meeting. We do have three items that are tentatively scheduled for that December 12th meeting. I know in the past I have mentioned that there is the possibility for a December 19th meeting. We're also currently contemplating that and will get back to the Planning Commission if that will be a meeting that will be scheduled. So we're still doing some work onto that as to whether or not that will be a hearing. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris?
I have a couple. On the 2020, 2050 website, you have a calendar out there. When you populate the calendar, you're going to have all of the public meetings that you're going to have, all the outreach meetings. Are they going to be on that calendar?
I believe that we will, yes, have that on there.
Can, when you do that, when you put it on the calendar, can you put the district that it's for or in? Because I'm hoping the Planning Commissioners can show up when they're local, that we can have District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, whatever.
Yes, we can do that.
The other question I had, the Housing Element Amendment, you said it's going to the Board of Supervisors on December 3rd?
Tentatively, we have it scheduled for December 3rd.
When do you think we'll have, or they'll have copies and we'll have a copy of a copy?
Likely be the week before.
The one week before, okay.
Correct.
Okay, that's all.
Anybody else?
I'll wait till he's over.
You have questions for him?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on. Thank you. Did you have a comment on something?
A question, a point of privilege. Is there an opportunity for members to discuss briefly an item that's not on the agenda, that's not a public issue, but I think it's of interest? I mean, in the public comment period? From the Board?
The Brown Act does require any extensive discussion to occur on a properly posted agenda item. It does allow for a brief discussion of an item, not on the agenda. But I would say brief discussion is really limited to probably a couple sentences, no more.
It's more of an item of interest rather than any action anticipated at all. And I know frequently, some of the Commissions I work with in the state, they usually have an agendized item where Commissioners can say, hey, I went to hear a Commission report, basically. I'm just curious, and I don't need to do it today. I just was thinking more and more about there are some interesting things going on across the country with respect to housing and zoning and even worldwide. I was just wondering where we could bring that up, if it's appropriate or not. I'd like to know, that's all.
Yeah, certainly at the Board meetings, there is a section on the agenda for Board Member reports, and we could certainly set up something on this agenda that identifies Planning Commissioner reports. If there's an interest in it, I believe our agendas to this point don't have it on it, but we certainly can add that if there is.
I think that's a great idea because we go to conferences and we report out on our conference findings, and we're going to be participating in the general plan update, hopefully participating at those workshops and things. So I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. I think that's all I needed to know.
So could we request that to be for the December 12th meeting, to have comments like that? Or?
Yeah, we can work with the clerk of the Board to get that set up on the agenda.
Okay. Anything else?
I would just say that the Brown Act would cover any adventurous activities related to that. So I think it's just purely reporting items of interest.
Yeah, for reporting of items, there's a little more flexibility. The Brown Act intends really to limit discussion on topics.
Not on the end. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Moving on. I will now open public comment for any items not on the Planning Commission agenda. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to provide comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on something not on the agenda? Anybody online? Seeing none. I will close public comment for items not on the agenda. We will now move on. I'd like to have items. There's three items on the agenda first, which on the consent agenda, we will have three items which are all minutes from previous Planning Commission meetings. But I think we're going to have to do these individually because not everybody was here for all three of them. So if we can get my if you want to read them off in which order we should go in, then we can just vote on those.
Yeah, before we get to that, if we are taking the consent items, we should see if there are any Commissioners that want to pull one of those items off the consent or if any members of the public would like to pull an item off consent.
I just have a question because I had an update to one of the minutes that was incorrect. Kelsey fixed it, but did it get to everybody else? How do I handle that here? We handle it here?
Yeah, so we would do that at this point. And I apologize, I forget which one.
I forgot which one, too. 10-10, okay, I'll bring it up at 10-10. It's a nothing.
So do you want to pull, should we pull it first or?
I can just fix it here because it's not a big deal, right? I'll just, okay.
I would suggest just going through each one of these as an item, and then we'll address them as they go.
I don't have that.
So the first item would be item, looks like 3A, the minutes for September 26, 2024.
And?
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
The first and the second, roll call.
Commissioner Rantine?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Watts?
No voting, I was absent.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alves?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dematte?
Yes.
And the next item would be item 3A, the minutes for October 10th, 2024.
I have a correction to the minutes.
2024.
It was myself who nominated George Alvez to the commission on what? What's the commission?
Water something. Waste water.
Waste water, so it was just me.
It's a committee.
It's a committee, sorry, not a commission. Okay.
So along with that change, then the request would be for a motion to approve it as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, please.
Second.
First and the second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Dolgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckler?
Yes.
Commissioner Rantine?
Yes.
Commissioner Watts?
Non-voting, I was absent.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alves?
Substantive, I was absent.
And Commissioner Dematte?
Yes.
Item number three.
3A, this would be the minutes for October 24th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and the second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rantine?
Yes.
Commissioner Watts?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alves?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dematte?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is the first hearing item, which is Beautiful Minds Wellness Project. And I believe that there is a request for a continuance on this item. I'd like to ask the Planning Director to make some comments on this item, please. Thanks, Chris.
Good morning, once again, Commissioners. So following publication of this agenda item, there were some issues that were raised that require coordination with the City of Auburn as well as the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. Therefore, staff is requesting that the item be continued to a date uncertain. With a date uncertain, that means that staff will renotice the item when it is placed back on an agenda.
Okay, thank you. Just a note, if anybody has any comments on this, it has to be on the continuance only. So I can open up public comment real quick. If there's anybody who wants to comment on this, then it's only a comment on the continuance, nothing else. Seeing nobody? Anybody online?
I see none.
I will close public comment on this and bring it back to the Commission.
I'll make a motion to continue.
The first, second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Dolgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Watts?
Yes.
Commissioner Rantine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alves?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckler?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Placer County Government Center Master Plan Amendment, which will be presented by Supervising Planner, Callie. Kendra Cecil, sorry. I'm just used to calling you Callie. So pardon my absence in my brain.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Callie Kendra Cecil, Supervising Planner at the Planning Services Division. The item before you this morning is a request to make an amendment to the development standards in the Placer County Government Center Master Plan. Today's requested actions include a recommendation from your commission to the Board to determine that the potential impacts of the amendment to the Placer County Government Center Master Plan is within the scope of the analysis of the Certified 2019 Final Environmental Impact Report, as well as to adopt an ordinance to amend the Placer County Government Center Master Plan's Table 2-1 Development Standards in order to allow medical services, hospitals, and extended care as a permissible use in the Commercial Plan Development and Zoning District subject to approval of a minor use permit. For a bit of background, the Placer County Government Center was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2019. This document regulates land uses within the government center and also includes development standards and design guidelines. The mix of uses within the government center have a focus on government, residential, commercial, and mixed-use land uses. Shown here in the black boundary is where the campus is. And just for reference, we are sitting right about here. The Placer County Government Center is surrounded by a mix of uses, including retail, residential, commercial, and medical services. The Health and Human Services Division has provided services on the campus for decades, and they are looking to expand the services that they can potentially provide. Specifically, they are looking to expand services that are provided within the Commercial Plan Development section of the campus. And for reference, that is shown here in the dashed green line. And right about where this star is, is where HHS is looking to potentially expand services. So the types of services that HHS is looking to provide do fall under Hospitals and Extended Care. That land use is defined in the zoning ordinance as a use that is for establishments that provide diagnostic services and medical treatment and have an organized medical staff, inpatient beds, and equipment available to provide those services. These could include anything from a convalescent care facility to a substance use disorder program. For full disclosure, HHS is looking at a grant to potentially bring a substance use disorder facility. However, that grant is not approved, and so it's still a question if that use would actually be brought to the campus. Regardless, it is important that we are not limiting our HHS to the types of services they can provide and have historically provided on the campus. So hospitals are in allowed use in the Commercial Plan Development Zone District with a conditional use permit. However, in the Placer County Government Center Master Plan, the allowable land uses under the CPD Zone District do not permit medical services, including hospitals and extended care. In review of the 2019 adoption of the plan, it appears that this land use was inadvertently not included. That's demonstrated by the fact that the campus has historically served as a hospital, was established as the DeWitt General Hospital in 1943, and historically, hospital uses have been on the campus. The amendment to the development standards would allow the use, but it would be subject to a minor use permit. So there would be a process if a medical service was proposed within the Commercial Plan Development Zone District on the campus. Shown here is Table 2-1 of the Placer County Government Center Master Plan. And this is the amendment that we are proposing to the developments, to the permit requirement table. So here we have the uses, the medical services, hospitals, and extended care. Here is the zoning district, Commercial Plan Development, combining Town Center, combining Design Corridor, and combining Aircraft Overflight. And this is an important consideration because the CPD Zone Districts overlaps the aircraft overflight compatibility zones. And I have some maps to demonstrate that in a second. So we have developed this language in consultation with the Placer County Transportation Authority. And this clarifies what can be operated in Compatibility Zone C2 compared to Compatibility Zone D. And so this is related to the Auburn Airport. The airport is the rectangular portion shown here. And these concentric circles represent the various compatibility zones. So here we have the government center. And you can see that the green compatibility zone clips the northern corner. And this is also where the CPD Zone District is. So again, we can see where the majority of the campus is within Aircraft Overflight Zone D. And then this small portion is within Compatibility Zone C2. And the reason why that is significant is because inpatient services are not permissible within Compatibility Zone C2, but they are compatible within Compatibility Zone D. So that is why, for example, this language includes that hospitals, including services for inpatient care, is only permissible in the Airport Land Use Compatibility Zone D and Zone C2. Hospital uses are limited to outpatient services. And then there's also a notation to see Table AUB-4A of the Placer County Airport Land Use Plan in the footnote below. And that footnote is included here, which further clarifies the conditions that the Airport Land Use Commission suggested when we brought this forward to them in October. So on October 23rd, the Airport Land Use Commission held a public hearing. At that hearing, the Commission determined that the proposed amendment is consistent with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan subject to two conditions regarding airport proximity disclosures and rooftop lighting and identification. This was also presented to the North Auburn Municipal Advisory Council on September 12th. At that meeting, no one from the public had any questions. However, there was one question from a MAC member regarding who would potentially operate a use if it came forward. And we clarified that if HHS proposes a project, then HHS would be the manager of that future potential use. So if a use is proposed, it would be subject to the Airport Land Use Commission conditions that I noted on the previous slide, as well as review per the Placer County Government Center Design Standards. In addition, there would also be a minor use permit process, including a public hearing. And potential conditions of approval would outline emergency evacuation procedures, hours of operation, and other operational aspects of the future potential project. So with that, staff is recommending your commission recommend to the Board to determine that the potential impacts of the amendment to the Placer County Government Center Master Plan is within the scope of the analysis of the Certified 2019 Environmental Impact Report, referenced as State Clearinghouse Number 2017-09202, and to adopt an ordinance to amend the Placer County Government Center Master Plan's Table 2-1 Development Standards to allow medical services, hospitals, and extended care as an allowable use in the Commercial Plan Development Zone District subject to approval of a minor use permit. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We also have Paul Breckenridge, the Deputy Director of Facilities, in the audience who is also available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Callie. Any questions from the Commission? I will open. Okay, I will, thank you. I'll open it to public comment for now, and then we'll go from there. So anybody in the audience like to speak on this? Seeing none? Anybody online?
Yes. Diane, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
And what comes to mind with this is that this was in play before the approval of the expansion for the flight, you know, the overflight parameters. Seems to me that that should have been in consideration at that time and limited the overflight expansion, which I was completely against having it expand out that far because Christian Valley gets impacted quite literally my house. But I'm thinking, shouldn't there not be a modification for a no-fly zone over such a hospital? And then I'm going to segue into the direction that I was, growing up here, when DeWitt Hospital was still fully functioning. This decommission had a lot to do with lead paint and other toxins that were later found from the post-World War II era. So I actually am in favor of a somewhat replacement of that mental institution wing that they had back then. But I think the resolve would be a much quicker one is to reduce the overflight, go back and revisit that because this plan was already being introduced well before that actually got introduced and passed, at least to my, best of my knowledge. So I think it's that or it's a designation like a federal building or a no-fly overzone to accommodate the fact that that's what you're trying to avoid a no-fly overzone to accommodate the fact that that's what you're trying to avoid, is having the public at a higher risk of overflight, crashes, and so on and so forth. I mean, we could all get hit by a bolt of lightning, it's not you're going to eliminate it completely, but that is my sentiment on the subject, and I appreciate your time. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I see no others.
Seeing none. I will close public comment. Any additional Commission questions or comments from staff, through staff, or staff? Seeing none? Anybody? Nobody?
No.
Okay, well, this, what was just said, this went to the review from the Airport Land Use Commission on October 23rd, 2024, so that was recent, so I'm presuming that they used a more recent boundaries.
Yes, yes, staff can, can respond to that. Yes, they did use the current compatibility plan in evaluating the project. I think as the Commission is aware, that plan was, was updated fairly recently, and was the subject of the rezoning effort that was, was heard by many members of this Commission, again, fairly recently. So again, the plan, the current plan was used in evaluating this request.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Could, if this goes through, and in the future, if the airport has to go through another expansion, will that, this be kind of grandfathered in, or would they have to come back and rezone from UP, or will that affect anything in the future?
So if the airport land use compatibility zones do change, then the limitations therein, I believe actually that the use would be grandfathered in, and if there was, if it was existing, but if a future use after something is expanded comes in, then it would be subject to whatever new policies are there.
So, so Callie is, is correct. I did also just want to make note that we are aware that the City of Auburn is looking at a potential change to their master plan. Should they proceed with a change to their airport master plan, that would need to go back through a, a process with the Airport Land Use Commission to perhaps make additional changes. So we are aware that they're talking about it, and that they're contemplating changes, but until that happens, the current compatibility plan that this was evaluated against is, is current.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. I have no other further questions? Yes, go ahead, Em.
Where are you, what was your question in relation to? You're saying if, if C2 is expanded, you're wondering then would it be grandfathered in?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Because we're not, it's in it now, but if it gets, if the airport in the future, 10 years from now, whenever, goes and asks for another extension, and that zone gets widened out, now it's in a C1, so would it have to be?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Could it be left in C, could it be left where it's at, or does it have to be moved, or does it get grandfathered in?
Gotcha, I see what you're saying.
So I'm just kind of prepping to see what happened in the future.
Okay.
Because if you're going to build a facility and it's there, all of a sudden now, that's a waste to have it there, because it's got to be moved, so.
Right, gotcha.
That's my question.
Okay.
Okay, though, if, if the boundary changes and the designation changes, and it's grandfathered in, but if they want to change the facility, they still have to meet the new criteria. Any changes in the future would have to meet the new criteria.
If it wasn't through prior to that change? If there was a facility? If there was a facility proposed, then it would be, reflect the current standards, but you're saying, Rich, if the boundary expanded, that new proposal would then be, have to follow the new standards, is that?
That's correct, yeah. At least my understanding.
Yes, and we do have provisions in our county code that apply to valid non-conforming uses, and what the Commission is discussing is essentially that if the use expands, there's limits as to how far it can expand before it is subject to the new requirements. And also, if the use ceases, there's limits as to how long that use can cease before it loses its vesting right.
Perfect.
But it basically means if you have the use in place, and it's actually existing and occurring, that is allowed to continue for as long as it maintains that same use and that same, for today, space.
And I'd also note, the way that the, the amendment language is drafted, reflecting C2 and D, that if there were any changes to the compatibility zones, that the way that the language is, is drafted, would accommodate that without a further change to the, to the, to the master plan.
Okay. Perfect. Answer my question. Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a comment. My questions were answered, because I was curious about what future uses could be in place, and I, I just, I personally think it seems like a good thing to have more integrated services around the HHS building. I know I'm very familiar with Medi-Cal program across the state, and county behavioral health services, and the county in general really plays a critical role, and actually provided the sort of integrated care for those folks, so that would be my only comment.
Great, thank you. If there's no further comments, we can, any deliberations, any changes you guys would like to make? If not, we can ask for a motion, and if there's a comment from.
Just before you get to a motion, the recommendations that are up, these are all recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, so I just.
Do them individually as well? Do them individually as well? Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the Planning Commission determine the potential impacts of the amendment to the Placer County Government Center Master Plan is within the scope of the analysis of the Certified 2019 Environmental Impact Report, SCH Number 201709202.
First.
I second.
And a second, roll call, please.
Dolgren?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Runtine?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alves?
Yes.
And Dimeté?
Yes.
I recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the Planning Commission adopt an ordinance to amend the Placer County Government Master Plan Table 2-1 Development Standards to allow medical services, hospitals, and extended care as allowable use under the Commercial Plan Development Zone District, subject to approval of a minor use permit.
Second, please.
I second.
The first and the second, roll call, please.
Dolgren?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Runtine?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alves?
Yes.
And Dimeté?
Yes.
The Planning Commission's recommended, recommendation will be forwarded to, by staff to the Board of Supervisors in an upcoming meeting, as the Board is in the final hearing authority on this request. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.